He is destroying his legacy. And hours later on TV, she tried to blame the violence on left-wing Antifa members.
I have never seen Trump rally attendees wearing helmets, black helmets, brown helmets, black backpacks, the uniforms that you saw in some of these crowd shots.
So David, what should we make of this apparent contradiction here?
Well, you can't look into her soul, whether she actually wanted to believe this or did believe this, or whether she, you know, this was the best you could come up with in the face of a crisis seemingly inspired by and goaded on by the sitting president of the United States who just didn't want to give up his office. But I've got to say that, you know, what they're doing, think of what Fox viewers are absorbing in the face of these scenes of violent tumult and angry protest resulting in a kind of insurrection trying to block the peaceful transfer of power. What you're seeing there is her trying to distract and say, oh, we're going to raise the worst possible fears of left-wing agitators, the president's sworn enemies, in a way for which there was no evidence, in a way in which every serious spooling of what occurred on January 6th has rejected and shown to be false.
So what does this incident tell you, David, about the role Fox News anchors play on and off the year?
Well, it tells you the integral role that they played in the Trump administration. You know, Sean Hannity wasn't just a famous Fox figure who Trump happened to grace with an interview here and there. He's one of the president's closest advisers, both echoing with the president's talking points, were shaping them and informing them. In this case, it shows you that those ties and that power and influence and the millions of viewers and the money was more important than what was in the public good or the nature of the public understanding this terrible trauma inflicted on the Capitol and the public, even if behind the scenes, they were saying things that you've got to respect, that they were channeling the president essentially to get his supporters to stand down and to pull back and to stop laying siege to one of the citadels of democracy.
Okay, that is NPR media correspondent David Fulkinflick. David, thanks as always for the time, much appreciated.
You bet.
And Here and Now is a production of NPR and BBUR Boston. I'm Scott Tong in Washington DC.
And I'm Lisa Mullins in Boston. You're listening to Here and Now. Funding for Here and Now comes from BetterHelp, connecting people with a therapist in a private online environment for issues like depression and anxiety. Seventeen thousand therapists are available through BetterHelp using a computer or smartphone. Betterhelp.com-public.
People who hate waste but want some sort of justice for their country, they want this solved. Because if we can't solve who killed head of state, then how is the average Haitian going to be able to walk through life thinking that they'll get any modicum of justice for anything that happens to them?
I'm Sabrina Tavernisi in for Michael Barbaro. That's today on The Daily from the New York Times.
Weekdays at 6:30 on Radio IQ.
Support for Radio IQ comes from our listener supporters and Good Samaritan, decorating love light trees with lights to honor loved ones this holiday season. Details at goodsam.care. And The Merius Group, a private wealth advisory practice of AmeriPrize Financial Services, LLC, providing investment and planning services for over 50 years. The Merius Group at AmeripriseAdvisors.com. And listeners like you.
Radio IQ is broadcasting in digital on WVTF Roanoke, WRQ Charles City, Richmond, WURV Richmond, WVTU Charlottesville, WBTS Charlottesville, WVTR Marion, WISE FM Wise, WQIQ Spotsylvania, WIQR Lexington, WEHC Emory, WLUR Lexington, and in Richmond on 92.5.
I'd like everyone to stand for a moment of silence or personal prayer and to remain standing for the Pledge of Allegiance. And just a reminder to remember our chairman Peters and the loss of his son yesterday, Nick Peters. Thank you.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Good afternoon and welcome to our meeting for December 14th, 2021. Regular meetings are held on the second and fourth Tuesday at 3:00 PM. Public hearings are held at 7:00 PM on the fourth Tuesday of each month. Deviations from the schedule will be announced. The meetings are broadcast live on RV TV Channel 3 and will be rebroadcast on Friday at 7:00 PM and on Sunday from 10:00 AM until 5:00 PM. Board of Supervisors meetings can also be viewed online through Roanoke County's website at www.roanokcanyva.gov. Our meetings are closed captioned, so it's important for everyone to speak directly into the microphones at the podium. Individuals who require assistance or special arrangements to participate in or attend Board of Supervisors meetings should contact the clerk to the board at 540-772-2005 at least 48 hours in advance. Also, I ask you to please turn off all your cell phones or place them on silence. Thank you. We move to item A in the opening ceremonies, number one, roll call. Clerk, can you please call the roll?
Mr. Mahoney?
Here.
Mrs. Hooker?
Here.
Mr. North?
Here.
Mr. Radford?
Here.
Mr. Peters.
Item B, request to postpone, add to, or change the order of agenda items. Are there any requests from board members to postpone or change?
No, sir.
Thank you. Mr. O'Donnell?
No, sir, no changes.
Okay, Mr. Lubek?
No, sir.
All right, thank you. We move to item C, briefings. Briefing to discuss with the Board of Supervisors the 2022 real estate assessment and Roanoke Valley economic conditions. I invite Ms. Gerhart, Director of Finance and Management Services, Mr. Fay, Director of Real Estate, Mr. Elliott, Budget Manager, to the podium. Welcome.
Good afternoon. We are here to discuss the current economic conditions, the 2022 real estate assessment, and the fiscal impact to Roanoke County. I will begin by sharing a brief overview of major federal stimulus and infrastructure measures passed since the onset of the COVID-19 pandemic. And then Steve Elliott, Budget Manager, will review various economic conditions and statistics. And Ken Fay, Director of Real Estate Valuation, will present the section on our 2022 real estate assessment, with Steve Elliott finishing with the real estate fiscal impact and next The local, national, and global economies have seen drastic changes since the onset of the COVID-19 pandemic, which began almost two years ago. There have been significant changes in unemployment, retail markets, supply chains, real estate, business practices, and government aid, just to name a few. This volatility has been weathered at the local level by prudent decisions and sound financial planning. Overall, the nation has now entered into a period of economic recovery from the pandemic. As a result, we are seeing and continue to anticipate growth here in the county. However, at the same time, we are also seeing the impacts of inflation in the cost of providing our current level of services to our citizens. Since March of 2020, which was the onset of the pandemic, legislation has been passed that has injected considerable amounts of stimulus dollars into the economy in an effort from the federal government to minimize the COVID-19 effect. The legislation created various stimulus payments to individuals and businesses to help maintain households and the businesses during mandated shutdowns and social distancing efforts. Federal funding has included the CARES Act, the American Rescue Plan Act, and the Infrastructure Investment and Jobs Act. These federal stimulus acts has also helped local and state governments to minimize the effects from reduced revenues and additional costs associated with dealing with the pandemic. We recently have seen the latest legislation signed into law November 15th. Again, these federal dollars are helping our nation through an unprecedented time. However, along with the additional dollars, we have seen inflation rise, which has increased the cost for goods. Federal stimulus dollars will subside, but there is uncertainty on what will happen to the current increases around inflation. I will now hand the presentation over to Steve Elliott, who will discuss various economic conditions and statistics.
Thank you, Lord, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. I will continue our discussion of the economy with details of our local economic conditions. As you will see in Ken's portion of the briefing, the residential market is very strong. This is shown both in sales and in our residential building permits, which have increased 11.8% when comparing the first 10 months of 2020 versus the same period of 2021, where we had 781 permits through October of that year, up to 873 in this year. New construction permits increased 15.1% and alteration permits increased by 9.7% over the same period compared to 2020. The valuation of residential building permits increased 24% from 2020 to 2021. And housing prices continue to trend higher due to demand and continued lower interest rates. As we have discussed in prior years, and you will see later in this briefing, business and commercial markets tend to fluctuate more from year to year in Roanoke County. Commercial building permits decreased by 21.1% when comparing the first 10 months of 2020 versus the first 10 months of 2021. However, these projects are often longer term and take longer for both permitting and to reach the point where they become part of the county's assessable base. The Economic Development Department has noted a 41% increase in prospect inquiries or the number of businesses looking at sites and/or buildings in Roanoke County. Also, sales tax revenue continues showing a strong growth trend, up 6.94% from FY 2020 to FY 2021. The most recent inflation rate is 6.82% as of November, based on the Consumer Price Index. This information just came out a few days ago and after we had begun work on this presentation. Roanoke County's unemployment rate has averaged 3.5% during 2021 and reached a pre-pandemic low of 2.7% in September, which is down from a high of 9.6% in April 2020, right after the onset of the COVID-19 pandemic. Virginia's unemployment rate decreased to 3.2% and the national unemployment rate decreased to 4.6% during the same period. New U.S. Census figures as of the 2020 census show that Roanoke County's population increased to 96,929 people, which is higher than projected by Weldon Cooper and has outpaced an estimated growth from prior years. Inflation is high at 6.82% due to the federal 19 COVID stimulus bills, labor market changes, and business trends. The local and national real estate markets continue to perform strongly due to continued lower interest rates and limited housing supply. Retail sales and sales tax continue on an upward trend due to consumer spending. Overall, economic conditions are improving as the local, national, and global economies recover from the most significant impacts of the pandemic. However, there are some areas for concern with inflation still continuing to rise and the anticipated slowing of growth in real estate and personal property values within the next few years. This chart shows the unemployment rate for Roanoke County as compared with the Commonwealth of Virginia and the national unemployment rates. As you can see on the line in blue, Roanoke County has been consistently lower than the Commonwealth and the nation. And while unemployment did spike immediately following the onset of the pandemic, the decreasing rate follows improving economic conditions. I'll remind the board that the majority of business license revenue is collected in February and March of each year. So Roanoke County saw more of a COVID-19 pandemic in FY 2021, as most of the collections in FY 2020 occurred before the onset of the pandemic and related business operation restrictions were put in place. The total number of business licenses fluctuates from year to year, but did increase in FY 2021. However, some of this growth was in businesses that had gross receipts of less than $135,000 per year, so only the $50 fee was collected. About 98% of business license revenue is based on gross receipts, so we did see a decline in FY 2021, even though the number of licenses increased. Usually, business license revenue correlates very closely with sales tax. However, due to recent changes in the collection of internet sales tax in Virginia, Roanoke did not see a similar reduction in sales tax revenue. Now, Ken Fay, Director of Real Estate Valuation, will review the 2020 real estate assessment. You will see on Slide 13 that the assessable base increased by $635 million in the 2022 assessment to $9.96 billion of assessable property in the county. We will be discussing the impacts of this assessment with our revenue team in January, and will bring the projected new revenues and recommendations to the board at a work session on February 8th.
Good afternoon, members of the board. The following information is a result of our 2022 general reassessment. What we've done is broke this slide down by category, residential, commercial, and we also look at new construction and market value. You can see the residential increase, percentage increase at 7.66%. The commercial portion of that was 1.3 for an overall increase in value of 6.82%. We also show here at the bottom of the slide what each one of the assessment increases are attributed to, with the market value of the residential properties showing the largest percentage increase, portion of the increase at 89.4%. With mass appraising that we do in order to set our reassessments, there are certain measures that we use for assessment accuracy. These are set forth by the IWO, which is the International Association of Assessing Officers, and they set certain standards. The three measurements that we rely most upon are the sales ratio, which is simply the assessment versus the sale price. The IWO standard is 91% to 105. This year, we came in at 91.1%. Our coefficient of dispersion, it measures how tight the ratios are clustered around the median. The lower the COD, the greater uniformity in appraised values. The range, IWO standards, 5% to 15%, and we fell in at 7.4%. Lastly, we have the price-related differential, and that measures equity between lower and higher value properties. 1% is ideal, where you have equal or the greatest amount of equity, and we're at 1.004%. So that shows real good vertical equity. The assessment growth history in the last 10 years, we had the period of time where the real estate market bottomed out, leading up to 2013. From that point on, started seeing an increase from 2015 to 2017. Most of that was driven by new construction. And then in the last five years, we've seen the increase in assessments driven by sales and market conditions. Here we see assessment growth history with inflation, and you can see, again, during the housing downturn, the growth was below inflation, then was pretty consistent through 2016, 2016 through 2018, and then the real estate values started to raise above the rate of inflation. And right now, with our values at 6.82% and the adjusted rate of inflation just happens to be 6.82%, so the assessment increase is tracking inflation. Here we have the median sales price history, single-family residential median sales, meaning the middle number, where you have the same amount of sales below that as you do above. And you see increase in median sales are consistent with sales growth this year, 255,000. And all these numbers are, by the way, as of November 15, 2021, and the way this year is going, I'm sure those, these numbers will increase by the end of the year. The effective date of our assessment is January 1, so for this one, it'll be January 1, 2022. Residential sales by price range, here we have the residential sales group of $100,000 increments at the entry level in the market, zero to 100,000, 18 units, same as we did last year. And then there's a drop in the 100 to 200, about the same, 200 to 300, and then you start to see our increases in the 3 to 400, and then the 400,000 and above. And some of this is fueled by lower interest rates and demand for higher-priced homes. The pandemic has had increased demand for larger homes with office space and for entertainment, for home entertainment. And it's also worth mentioning that the increase in market values have pushed homes from each category, 100,000 category up toward the next. The history of residential sales, this is going back to the last 10 years, this is the number of qualified sales. Qualified sales means a normal-sized transaction where the buyer and seller are acting prudently in their best interest with adequate exposure to the market. This year, we're at 1,444. The same time last year, we're at 1,349. So it's an increase in number, and by the end of the year, I'm sure that we're going to exceed that amount of the 1,581 sales that we had last year. Along with this number of sales, we have the foreclosures. You can see that's the green line that's dipped quite a bit. Last year, it dropped substantially down to 18, and this year, down to nine. A lot of that coincides with the forbearance programs that the government has created in order to provide relief during the pandemic. Here we have our new coming, coming new construction and redevelopment. These are some of the remaining lots and some of the existing new developments. The retreat, we got two more buildings coming on next year. Village Green Apartments, we have another building coming on. This is the commercial new construction that we have. The Vineyard Station in Benton has opened up the Joey Goodpies and now the coffee shop, so they're continuing to improve and finish their, the building permits out for the Vineyard Station. Rosie's Expansion, we had the Tinglewood Mall with the new parcels. We all see that going by all the time here. Pretty soon, going to add those two new buildings with the three businesses in each one of those. The projected hotel in Benton and we got the Louis Gale Emergency Room in Bonsec that's certainly quite on its way. Our 2022 hearing assessment dates, the assessment notices will be bound out December 30th, 2021, so that they would be received at the first of the year. We have our informal appeals during the middle of January. Formal appeals through the Board of Equalization dates are in April, July, and October. The last, the final deadline to file an appeal would be September 12. Next, we're going to have Steve come back and finish up with the real estate fiscal impact and our next steps. Thank you.
Thank you, Ken. I'll now review the fiscal impact of the 2022 real estate assessment with you. As Ken discussed, our assessment for calendar year 2022 increased 6.82%, largely due to increases in market value driven by increased home sales and higher sale prices. We have seen a trend of continued assessment growth over the past few years, which accelerated for calendar year 2022. While this growth is higher than in prior years, as Ken mentioned, the assessment growth of 6.82% is identical to the current growth in inflation of 6.82%. While this assessment growth would lead to increased revenues, inflation is already impacting the county with significant increases in expenditures for various goods and services. Because the existing assessable base value is expected to increase by over 1%, Roanoke County is required by state code to hold a public hearing on the effective tax rate, and that is scheduled for March 22nd. An advertisement will be placed in the Roanoke Times 30 days in advance of this public hearing. Any change to Roanoke County's real estate tax rate will have an impact on revenues collected. Because the real estate assessment is based on a calendar year and the county budgets on a July to June fiscal year, any tax rate change would impact both the current and upcoming fiscal years. Thus, a once-in change in the real estate tax rate would have an impact to the county of about $466,000 in the current year. Because the transfer to schools was adopted with the FY 2022 budget, there would be no impact to Roanoke County schools in the current fiscal year. However, a once-in change in the tax rate would impact both the county and schools in fiscal year 2023. A once-in change would be about $498,000 for the county and $414,000 for schools. While we saw growth in both residential and commercial real estate assessments, the majority of total assessment growth is attributable to growth in residential assessments, particularly in single-family residential assessments. Roanoke County has consistently had a residential to commercial ratio of about 86 to 87% residential versus 13 to 14% commercial real estate for many years. The recent housing market with increased sales and home prices have caused this ratio to remain essentially the same despite assessment growth in all areas. Even though the majority of the assessment increase was due to growth in residential real estate, Roanoke County continues to see strong growth in new construction. This chart shows our new construction history over the past 10 years. I will note that the data for 2021, as Ken said, is as of November 15th, so we will likely have some new construction by year end. While the county did not see as much new construction and commercial real estate in 2021, there is commercial development ongoing that has not been issued a certificate of occupancy and is not included in the 2022 assessment. Commercial new construction is often more complex, and projects are larger, sometimes spanning multiple years, which leads to some fluctuation from year to year. And our next steps are, the county administrator will propose the FY 23 through FY 2032 CIP on January 25th. The county administrator will then propose the FY 2023 operating budget on March 8th. On March 22nd, the board will hold public hearings on the effective tax rate, the maximum tax rate, and the board will adopt the maximum tax rate. On April 12th, the board will hold a public hearing on the tax rate adoption, the operating and capital budgets, and will adopt the 2022 tax rates. On April 26th, the board will hold a second public hearing on the operating and capital budget, and will have the first reading of the FY 2022, 2023 operating and capital budget ordinances. And on May 10th, the board will have the second reading and adoption of the FY 2023 operating and capital budget ordinances. We also have several work sessions planned with the board from January through budget adoption in May. On January 11th, we will have a work session on the CIP. On January 25th, we will have a work session on mid-year revenue and expenditure updates and discuss FY 2023 budget issues. On February 8th, we will discuss the FY 2023 revenue outlook and our accounting fees and charges compendium. We plan to have two work sessions on February 20- We plan to have two work sessions on February 22 to discuss employee compensation, outside agency funding, and the FY 23 to 32 capital improvement program. And finally, we have two work sessions to discuss the FY 23 operating budget on March 22 and April 12. And with that, we'd be happy to take any questions or comments you may have.
Thank you. Any discussions, questions, Mr. North?
Earlier in the presentation, Steve, it was mentioned that sales tax revenues are up 6.9%. Can someone tell me what that translates to? What is 1% on the sales tax? I know it used to be 12.2. What is the estimate?
We'd be happy to respond with a budget memo on that. I'll have those numbers right on, right offhand right now.
Thank you. That's all.
All right. Yeah, Ms. Mahoney.
Mr. Fay, I have a technical question. If you go back to slide 14 and you were showing the under assessment accuracy, the price-related differential. And in your note, you indicate that a PRD greater than one implies one kind of result. And we're just a little bit over one. Not now, if you have it on the top of your head, but just kind of know, going back last couple of years, three, four, five years, what has been the price-related differential? And number one, what is it over the last couple of years? And number two, does that concern you that it's over one, even though it's 4,000th of a percent over? Is that a red flag for you in any way?
Yeah, the 4,000th of 1% really is, is not a lot of concern. Yeah, we've been right about one and a little above in the past. What happens is you have economies of scale. A lot of times, the smaller homes have a higher per square foot. And it's a challenge always to make sure that the assessments come in about, you know, the same as far as the assessment ratio. But that 1.004 is, is very good numbers.
Have we ever been under one recently?
Not, not that I recall. Not, not that I'm aware of.
Great. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Fay, I got a comment. You, you mentioned about the, the housing industry and I know a little bit about that. But I agree with the low interest rates and the demand right now is driving that. One of the thing that nationwide, my builder peers, we have, we didn't build houses from '07 to 2017. Now, all of a sudden, we're building houses like crazy because pent-up demand. And so that, that little item gets left out a lot of time. It's the pent-up demand. And plus millennials started buying homes. And so with those two items, I mean, we're, we're just, we're building crazy right now all over the region.
Yeah, that's a very good point. The National Association of Realtors says that the average age that someone buys a home is 33. And the highest age group right now is 27 to 32. So that group, as they move toward that 33, is going to be that high demand, going to continue that demand for housing. There's also the certain REITs, the real estate investment trusts, that are actually buying or building with partnering up like GL Homes to build actual rental, single-family home communities. So there's a lot of demand and a lot of participants in that demand.
Yeah, and two weeks ago, I sold three houses in three days. So it's, it's crazy.
It really is.
Thank you so much for your report. Thank you. We move on to item D, new business presentation. If you're in financial results for June 30, 2021, acceptance of audit report and allocation of year-end funds. Ms. Gearhart, Director of Finance and Management Services, welcome back.
Thank you. At this time, I would like to introduce John Alterich, who is a partner at Brown Edwards Company. And he is here to provide you with a brief overview of our fiscal year 2021 external audit results.
Good to see you all today. As you know, every locality in the state of Virginia has to have an audit done each year. Okay? That audit then has to be presented in an open meeting like this to the governing council. And that's why I'm here today. I'm pleased to let you know, we have completed the audit for Roanoke County for the year ended June 30, 2021. Included in that audit is also the school system as well as their activity funds. So those three entities, along with the EDA, are part of the audit. And you have that in a document that was issued. The results of the audit are this. You were issued an unmodified or a clean opinion. So that's the highest level of assurance we will put on financial information. The other thing you'll notice in your audit, we have to test a certain amount of the federal money that comes through the county. They call that a single audit. And you don't look at all that, you have to look at a percentage. And in your case, it has to be over 20% of the funds that come through. I'm pleased to let you know, you all had also a clean audit of the federal dollars, no issues at all. And then finally, the last piece we have to look at relates to state compliance matters. The auditor of public accounts in conjunction with state code, they pull together around, probably about 100 pages of testing that we have to do. It's not fun. But I'm pleased to let you know, in looking at all that, there were no issues at all, which is rare. Most of the time, you know, we might have a client that will have one or two little things pop up related to the state. But in your case, there were no issues at all. So, you know, if I had to give a report card, this would be basically akin to straight A's. You all did a great job. You've got a very good staff. Your staff pull this together, a lot of localities we come to. We have to help them pull the financial report together, quite frankly. In your case, your staff, in essence, gives it to us. And we're not having to come in and clean up the books and make adjustments. It truly is what we call a pure audit. And that's something you all should be proud of, that you have that staff. But again, this is the really high level. This complies with state code that I presented. But I'm happy to answer any questions you have about the audit, the audit process, or anything else you might have today.
Any questions, Board members?
No questions.
Great news.
It is good news. We have good people.
Thank you so much.
You're welcome.
Thank you, John. First, I would like to give recognition to the Finance and Management Service team on their hard work to complete all of the requirements of the external audit. And I would especially like to thank Jessica Beamer, Assistant Director of Finance and Management Services, for coordinating and pulling it all together for us. There have been no changes since we reviewed the financial results at November 17 work session. So staff recommends accepting the audited financial results for the fiscal year ended June 30, 2021 and allocating the year-end savings as shown on attachment one in the board report.
Okay. Any questions?
No questions.
Okay. I asked, look for a motion to approve the staff recommendation.
I'll make a motion. Mr. Chairman, we approve item D1.
Thank you. Do I have a second?
Second.
I have a motion and a second. Clerk, can you please call the roll?
Mr. Mahoney?
Yes.
Mrs. Hooker?
Yes.
Mr. North?
Yes.
Mr. Radford?
Yes.
Thank you, Ms. Gearhart. We move to item D2, resolution supporting the design and limited access control changes for the Interstate 81 widening project from exit 137 to exit 141 to Thomas Magisterial District. Welcome Megan Cronice, Transportation Planning Administrator.
Thank you very much, Mr. Chairman. Good afternoon, members of the board. This, the Virginia Department of Transportation has requested that Roanoke County adopt a resolution to support the design and limited access control changes for the Interstate 81 widening project from exit 137 to 141. In 2019, legislation was approved to fund I-81 improvements in the Roanoke Valley. The first segment of I-81 to be widened to six lanes with this funding source is located between approximately exit 137 at Wildwood Road and exit 141 at Route 418, which is Electric Road. In this vicinity, I-81 parallels the boundary between the city of Salem and Roanoke County with the city located to the south and the county located primarily to the north of the roadway. As part of this project, VDOT has requested that the city of Salem and county of Roanoke support the project design as well as the proposed limited access changes to facilitate construction. Limited access changes must be approved by the locality in which they are proposed. The proposed design includes one additional lane in the northbound and southbound directions with widening primarily occurring in the median of the roadway with some widening to the outside of the southbound lanes. Three bridges located at Wildwood Road, Academy Street, Goodwin Avenue, and Wildwood Road at exit 137 will leave sufficient space underneath for future bicycle and/or pedestrian accommodations. Evaluations for sound walls are underway and are anticipated to be included on the northbound or city of Salem side between exit 137 at Wildwood Road and Route 311, Thompson Memorial Drive. There are no sound walls anticipated on the Roanoke County southbound side of the roadway due to the spacing between homes and other noise evaluation measures. This is the same as with the 141 to 143 project that's wrapping up construction right now. VDOT held a virtual public hearing on this project in February of 2021. The limited access changes proposed are minimal in nature to accommodate a number of new stormwater management ponds, drainage infrastructure, and slope maintenance. Minor modifications are also included to clean up existing limited access boundaries. And all of those proposed changes are included in the attachments that are in your packet. There are no anticipated impacts to the Kessler Mill Public Service Center, the Hanging Rock Battlefield Trail, or to the exit 140 park and ride. The widening project is nearing construction with activity anticipated this spring. The project is expected to be complete by January 2026. There is no fiscal impact and staff recommends approval of the resolution. I'm happy to answer any questions you might have.
Any questions, Board members?
Mr. Chairman, I don't have any questions at this time. I would just like to say that this is really needed. There's a lot of accidents that happen in this stretch of the interstate. And so I'm really looking forward to that project being completed. Four years is probably about right in how long it will, it will take. But looking forward to that completion. And Mr. Chairman, I'm ready to make a motion if it's so desired.
Yes, please.
So I would just like to move that we support the resolution for the design and limited access control changes for the Interstate 81 widening project from exit 137 to exit 141.
Okay, we have a motion. Do I have a second?
Second.
All right. Any further discussion? Have a motion, a second. Clerk, can you please call the roll?
Mr. Mahoney?
Yes.
Mrs. Hooker?
Yes.
Mr. North?
Yes.
Mr. Radford?
Yes.
Thank you. We move to item D3, resolution appointing a county administrator and approving an employment agreement. Mr. Lubin, County Attorney, welcome.
Good afternoon, Mr. Chairman and members of the board. I would first like to share what a pleasure it has been to work with Mr. O'Donnell in his capacity as county administrator to wish him well in his retirement, which will be effective on February 1. He has served the county well and will be missed. I have prepared, at the board's direction, an employment agreement and a resolution for the appointment of a new county administrator. There is one minor change to the resolution that was included in the board's packet. Insofar as our chairman, Mr. Peters, is unable to be with us today, I have amended the resolution to allow the vice chair, Mr. Radford, to sign the employment agreement. I understand that the board is ready to act on this matter. And we'll turn the time over to the board to announce their chosen administrator by motion, discussion, and vote.
A motion.
Mr. Chairman, I do have a motion. At this time, I'd like to make a motion on item D3 that the Board of Supervisors appoints Richard L. Kaywood as Roanoke County Administrator effective February the 1st, 2022. And that we authorize you, the vice chairman, in the chairman's absence to sign the employment agreement on behalf of the Roanoke County Board of Supervisors. And I want to also say thank you, Mr. O'Donnell, for the time you've, you've had with us here on this board in the last three or so years. But you're not going nowhere until January 31.
I hear you.
Thank you, Mr. North. Do I have a second?
Second.
All right, I have a second. Any discussion by the group? Well, I'll just add a few comments. And that is, we did a nationwide search for this position. We interviewed people far and near. We had, I think, close to 18 applicants. And so we had an executive search firm, which is here with us today. They helped us with that process and that interview process. So our, I know we have, Mr. Kaywood was against, was going up against some very well-qualified people. And Mr. Kaywood, you were definitely, came out on top. So at this point, there's no further discussion. Can I have the clerk call the roll?
Mr. Mahoney?
Yes.
Mrs. Hooker?
Yes.
Mr. North?
Yes.
Mr. Radford?
Yes. And I would like to invite Richard Kaywood up to the podium to make a few comments if he so desires.
Oh, no, there we go.
Can we start the timer?
Start the timer.
Mr. Vice Chairman, members of the board. First, my wife Amy and I would also like to offer our deepest condolences to Chairman Peters and his family. And as parents, we cannot possibly imagine the magnitude of his loss. And we certainly join him in his sorrow and grief. I do appreciate the board's confidence in selecting me to be the next administrator. Believe that Roanoke County has a tremendous amount of positive momentum underway in our economic development efforts within the 419 Town Center area at Tanglewood in Vinton, Explorer Park, and just generally throughout the county. And as you just heard, we're experiencing recent records in housing starts and population growth. And we have many, many, many things moving in the right direction. So I look forward to working with the board to carry this momentum forward and really to working with the board to expand that vision, both for our county and for the community. And there's just kind of three brief things that really excite me about starting this role. First, I'm going to get the opportunity to serve the community where I have lived and worked since 2004. We raised our family here, we shop here, we worship here. And it's just great to have the opportunity to serve that community in a new way. Second, I think I'm going to continue to get to work for a wonderful Board of Supervisors who has been very supportive to me during my almost nine years with the county. And I think each of you, in your own ways, has taken opportunities to help me grow and develop professionally. And I really appreciate that. I really look forward to that continuing. So I'm looking forward to working for you. And then finally, most importantly, I'm looking forward to leading a great team. I think that Roanoke County has some of the best and most dedicated local government professionals in the Commonwealth, if not the nation. And that comes in the form of almost over 1,000 full-time employees and many, many more part-time employees. And they come in and work each and every day diligently to deliver what I think are world-class services to our community. So it's going to be my privilege to continue to be part of that team and serve as its next leader. And I can't wait to get started. I guess it won't be until February because that has to stay until the last day. Thank you very much, and I look forward to it.
Thank you.
Yeah, go ahead.
I'm sorry, Mr. Chair, I meant to mention this earlier. Mr. Peters has shared with us that he voices his support today for Richard and that he believes Richard is sincere and wants to see Roanoke County move forward. And he looks forward to working with Richard also in the years to come. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. North. I was going to say that, but you got me, got there first. Appreciate it. We move on to item E, public hearing, item one. Public hearing to receive citizen comments regarding proposed amendments to the fiscal year 2021, 2022 budget in accordance with the Code of Virginia, Section 15.2-2501. Ms. Gearhart, Director of Finance and Management Services.
Hello again. This item is to conduct a public hearing for citizen comments amending the fiscal year 2021, 2022 budget by adjusting the aggregate amount to be appropriated during the fiscal year by $9,728,479.88, which represents $9,560,389.91 for the appropriation of the Roanoke County Public Schools 2020-2021 fiscal year-end funds, for a municipal utility assistance program for the town of Vinton, and $50,000 for constructing a playground. Section 15.2-2507 of the Code of Virginia as amended provides that whenever such amendment exceeds 1% of the total expenditure shown in the adopted budget, the county must publish notice of a meeting and public hearing. The notice must state the county's intent to amend the budget and include a brief synopsis of the proposed budget amendments. The notice was published on December 7, 2021. Staff recommends conducting the public hearing to receive citizen comments.
Thank you, Ms. Gearhart. And then with that, at this time, I will open the public hearing. Clerk?
I have no one.
And seeing none, I close the public hearing. We move to item F, first reading of ordinances. Item one, emergency ordinance appropriating $9,560,389.91 from the Roanoke County Public Schools fiscal year 2020-2021. $9,560,389.91 from the Roanoke County Public Schools' fiscal year 2020-2021 year-end funds to the fiscal year 2021-2022 Roanoke County Public Schools' budget. It's requested upon a four-fifth vote of the board. The second reading will be waived, and the ordinance will be adopted as an emergency measure. Ms. Peterson, Director of Finance for Roanoke County Public Schools, welcome.
Thank you. Good afternoon, Mr. Chairman and distinguished supervisors. Per the school division's current year-end policy and the Board of Supervisors' comprehensive financial policy, I present to you the School Division's report of year-end carryover balances. Our full report is included in your packet, so I won't bore you by reading the minutia, but I will highlight a few items. The School Division ended the 2021 school year in the general fund with a revenue surplus of $2.7 million, a departmental savings of $1.7 million, and a personnel savings of $3.1 million. Added to this is the $2 million emergency carryover to give us a total of $9.6 million. The School Board appropriated these funds on November 11th in the following manner, which is consistent with the county and schools' policies. Incumbrances of $80,154.47, emergency contingency for $2 million, 50% of the remaining balance to major capital, $3,740,117.72, minor capital, $1,847.8372, CSA contribution of $1 million, fleet replacement fund of $5 million, and the technology replacement fund transfer of $392.334, for a total of $9.6 million. Today, there was a public hearing for this balance and our request for this ordinance. However, we do have $52.2 million of carryover in other funds that staff will bring before you on January 11th. I appreciate the opportunity to bring this before you, and can I answer any questions you have?
Any questions, board members? Ms. Peters? Okay. If not, I'll ask for a motion to adopt the ordinance with a four-fifth vote to waive the second reading.
Mr. Chairman, I'll make a motion. I move to adopt the emergency ordinance appropriating $9,560,389.91 from the Roanoke County Public Schools' fiscal year 2020-2021 year-end funds to the fiscal year 2021-2022 budget.
Thank you. Do I have a second?
Second.
Thank you, I have a second. Clerk, can you please call the roll?
Mr. Mahoney?
Yes.
Mrs. Hooker?
Yes.
Mr. North?
Yes.
Mr. Radford?
Yes. Move to Item 2, Ordinance Amending the Roanoke County Public Schools' Budget and Appropriating $1,845,871 to the General Fund. Ms. Peterson, you got it again.
Thank you. Staff gave a presentation to the School Board during work sessions in November, December, and then we also presented at the December 9th School Board meeting this topic. This topic came aboard abroad when staff identified a critical shortage of nutrition workers and instructional assistants. To address this issue, the human resources team analyzed how to adjust certain positions and grades at the lower end of our pay scale. They did not look at individual positions, rather they looked at the full, what did I say, the full grade that people were in, in addition to relatable positions, so that there was integrity in making sure that the move was appropriate in relation to other The cost of this mid-year pay increase will be $963,660. And of course, we can't change the pay plan without being able to pay for it. So we did take a careful look at our revenues, and tracking our enrollment, we are running higher than our budget enrollment, between 131 and 184 students higher on a monthly basis. We are projecting that our March 31st ADM will be 153 students higher than what we budgeted. This is going to net us approximately $845,871 additional revenue that would otherwise just go into year-end balance that can go towards helping this critical need for the school division right now. In addition, we have been tracking our sales tax income, and we are trending at about a 7.3% higher than prior year. This is falling in line with the House Appropriations Committee presentation where they saw or projecting a 7.6% increase. This turns out to be about $2.4 million for the school division, and we are looking at only increasing our budget by $1 million to be conservative. And so we are looking to increase our budget by $1,845,871, of which $963,660 will be allocated towards these pay plan adjustments, and the remaining $882,211 will be used for other costs, other cost line items that we expect to be increased. So I thank you for letting me present a second topic to you, and can I answer any questions on this one for you?
Okay, thank you. Any questions for Ms. Peterson?
Just one question of understanding. It's good that the ADM's coming up, 13,240, and that's a positive number. However, according to the CAFER, I was looking to see had we had a recovery compared to 2020 when the pandemic started, and we were 13,576 at the number that's in the CAFER. Whether that's right or not, I'm not sure, but the point is, while we're making progress over last year, we're not back to where we were before the pandemic in early 2020.
We are not.
Okay, well, hopefully we'll get there.
We're hoping to.
By next March or next August.
Maybe with all of this real estate development, we will get there.
Well, you'd think so. I hope some of these people got some children that are moving into the county as well. Thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
So I just want to comment that I think it's a, it's a needed move, that we have got to make sure that we're giving the appropriate reward for the hard work that the teachers, the instructional assistants, the nutritional support staff are giving the county schools at this time. So it's very important that we do this. I don't think this is typical mid-year that something like this happens. And I was asking some pretty pointed questions earlier about, are we taking, you know, one-time money to fund recurring costs? But I was convinced through the explanation that we're okay. We're okay taking this on. So with that being said, Mr. Chairman, I would like to make a motion that we approve the ordinance amending the Roanoke County Public Schools' budget and appropriating $1,845,871 to the general fund.
Okay, and scheduling the second reading for January 11th, 2022.
Thank you.
Thank you. Do I have a second?
Second.
Thank you. Clerk, please call the roll.
Mr. Mahoney?
Yes.
Mrs. Hooker?
Yes.
Mr. North?
Yes.
Mr. Radford?
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you. We move to Item G, Second Reading of Ordinances, Item 1, Ordinance Accepting Funds in an Amount of $50,000 from the Friends of the Blue Ridge and Appropriating the Funds to Roanoke County's Fee Class Fund to be used for constructing a playground at Explorer Park. Doug Blunt, Director of General Services and Parks, Recreation and Tourism, welcome.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Great to see you as well as board members today. The Friends of the Blue Ridge is a nonprofit organization. Their mission is to help preserve, promote, and enhance the outstanding natural beauty, ecological vitality, and cultural distinctiveness of the Blue Ridge region for future generations. The Friends would like to donate $50,000 for the purpose of constructing an inclusive and destination playground at Explorer Park. The playground is proposed to be constructed next to the pavilion at Explorer Park, in Explorer Park at Adventure Village. The playground will have a woodland theme and will have features that all children can play on. There have been no changes since the first reading. Staff recommends approval of the ordinance, and I would be happy to answer any questions that you have.
Members have any questions? Okay. Do I have a motion to adopt the ordinance?
Mr. Chairman, I would move that we approve Item G1, that is, accepting $50,000 from the Friends of the Blue Ridge and appropriate those dollars to the Roanoke County's Fee Class Fund to construct a playground at Explorer Park.
And I will second that motion, and I'll make a comment that you showed us last time those pictures of what it'll be, and that looks really exciting for the youngsters that come to Explorer Park. I think it's much needed. It fills a gap and a hole that just isn't there right now, so will they have it ready next week?
Not next week, but our goal is to have it installed by summertime.
Okay, great. Appreciate it. Okay, clerk, call the roll, please.
Mr. Mahoney?
Yes.
Mrs. Hooker?
Yes.
Mr. North?
Yes.
Mr. Radford?
Yes. Thank you. Item G2, Ordinance Accepting Funds in the Amount of $118,089.97 from the Commonwealth of Virginia, appropriating such funds to Roanoke County's Grant Fund for distribution to the town of Vinton for the purpose of providing municipal utility assistance and authorizing the execution of Item 1, a memorandum of understanding, and 2, certification of receipt for the use of such funds. Ms. Gerhart, Director of Finance and Managing Services, welcome back.
Thank you. This program does require the Roanoke County to act as the town's fiscal agent and accept the monies on their behalf. It again does require us to sign a certificate of receipt and also an MOU, and there has been no changes to this item since the first reading.
All right, thank you. Any questions for Ms. Gerhart?
So Ms. Gerhart, it's one more duty and responsibility for your department to monitor the expenditure of these funds. Congratulations.
Thank you.
No good deed goes unpunished.
Do I have a motion to adopt the ordinance?
Mr. Chairman, I would move that we approve the ordinance, Item G2, where we accept $118,089.97 from Commonwealth Virginia and appropriate those funds to the Grant Fund and distribute that to the town of Vinton, and we also authorize executing the memorandum of understanding and also the certification, and our sympathies to Ms. Gerhart's department.
Okay, right, right. And do I have a second?
Second.
Do I have a second? Clerk, please call the roll.
Mr. Mahoney?
Yes.
Mrs. Hooker?
Yes.
Mr. North?
Yes.
Mr. Radford?
Yes, thank you. We move to Item H, Public Hearing and Second Reading of Ordinances, Item 1, Ordinance Amending Chapter 18, Section 18-63.1 of the Roanoke County Code, Discontinuing Roanoke County's Receipt of Applications and Fees for the Issuance of Hermit's Receptic Tanks On-Site Sewer Disposal Systems and Wells. Tarek Mounier, Director of Development Services, welcome.
Thank you, Mr. Radford. Mr. Chairman, member of the board, this is being the second reading of the same ordinance we presented at the first meeting. All details in relation to this item. There has been no changes. Ms. Cindy McTell, I believe she's here, available also from the Allegheny Roanoke Health Department in case if there is any questions. Recommendation before you for approval after the public hearing.
Okay. All right, at this time, I will open the public hearing.
I have no one signed up to speak.
Okay, we have no one. Ms. Whitaker, have you have any emails or anything? Okay. All right, at this time, I'll close the public hearing, and are there any questions for Mr. Mahoney from the board?
Yes, sir.
Any comments? Well, I'll make a comment. I'm glad we're moving this out and over into their, their world, because like I said before, other localities are doing the same thing, so glad to see we don't have to micromanage that process anymore, and glad VDH has got it in their bailiwick. Do I have a motion to adopt this ordinance?
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion to adopt H1.
Okay, and I'll second that. Clerk, can you call the roll?
Mr. Mahoney?
Yes.
Mrs. Hooker?
Yes.
Mr. North?
Yes.
Mr. Radford?
Yes.
Thank you.
Item 1, Appointments. Does any of the board members have an appointment that has not been given to the clerk?
Mr. Chairman, I do. I would like to add to the list on the consent agenda for Mr. Todd Simmons to be appointed to the RVRA board.
All right. Do I have any, any objection from board members?
No objections.
Okay, thank you. We move to Item J, Consent Agenda. All matters listed under the consent agenda are considered by the board to be routine and will be enacted by one resolution in the form or forms listed below. If discussion is desired, that item will be removed from the consent agenda and will be considered separately. Does any board member wish to remove any item from the consent agenda?
Yes, sir, Mr. Chairman. If we could pull, I believe it is Item J2, which is the meeting schedule for the Board of Supervisors for calendar year 2022. If you have a chance to look at that resolution, on the second page, I think we are showing the meeting in November to be on November 8th, and I would suggest that perhaps we ought to move that to Wednesday, November 9th. I believe November 8th is Election Day.
Right.
And I think in the past, we've tried to avoid that.
Correct.
I don't think there are any local elections that day, but just to be safe, let me suggest amending that resolution so that the meeting in November be Wednesday, November 9th.
Okay, so it is pulled?
Do we want a separate vote on that one?
Yes, we need a second for this one.
Okay, so we need a motion to...
He moved, we need a second.
To remove J2. Correct?
Correct, that's correct, sir.
And Mr. Mahoney, you make that motion?
I made that motion, sir.
I'll second.
And second by Ms. Hooker. Clerk, call the roll.
Mr. Mahoney?
Yes.
Mrs. Hooker?
Yes.
Mr. North?
Yes.
Mr. Radford?
Yes. And then we're back to make an emotion to adopt the consent agenda.
Mr. Chairman, I would move that the board adopt the consent agenda as printed in our agenda materials.
Okay, do I have a second?
Second.
Thank you. Clerk, call the roll.
Mr. Mahoney?
Yes.
Mrs. Hooker?
Yes.
Mr. North?
Yes.
Mr. Radford?
Yes, thank you. We move to Item K, Citizens' Comments and Communications. Clerk, do we have any?
I don't have anyone signed up.
All right. We move to Item L. I'll look for a motion to receive and file the following reports.
Mr. Chairman, I would move that we receive and file the six reports that are listed.
Okay, thank you, and I will second that. Clerk, can you please call the roll?
Mr. Mahoney?
Yes.
Mrs. Hooker?
Yes.
Mr. North?
Yes.
Mr. Radford?
Yes. We move to Item M, Work Sessions, Item 1, Work Session with the Board of Supervisors to Review Possible Water and Sewer Projects with Second Round of ARPA Funds. Mike McElvoy, Executive Director of the Western Virginia Water Authority, Philip Thompson, Director of Planning, and Jill Loop, Director of Economic Development, will lead that work session. Then Item N, we will move into a closed meeting pursuant to the Code of Virginia as follows. We'll have discussion or consideration of the disposition of publicly-held real property where a discussion in an open meeting would adversely affect the bargaining position or negotiating strategy of the public body, namely, property located at the Vinton Business Center. Do I have a second?
Second.
Clerk, call the roll.
Mr. Mahoney?
Yes.
Mrs. Hooker?
Yes.
Mr. North?
Yes.
Mr. Radford?
Yes. At this time, the board will now recess to the third floor and will return at 7:00 PM for an evening session.